I am seeing six thirty-two, so I will call the meeting to order and we can get started. Ah, here's Sal, excellent. Hi Sal, okay, since we're all appearing remotely, we all need to start by introducing themselves, ourselves. I'll introduce myself, Jack McCullough, Mayor, and then we'll start over at Donna's end of the horseshoe. So Donna?
Donna Bate, District One.
Harry Brown, District Three.
Sal?
Sal Alfano, District Two.
Tim?
Tim Heaney, District Three.
And Helen Cohen is not present?
And Lauren Hurl from District One.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll mention the meeting logistics and briefly, anyone who is participating remotely, which is to say, everybody, please set your, your name to be your full name and so that we can get you on the minutes right. Anyone who's called on to address the council, please state your name and where you live again, so we can get you in the minutes. We ask everyone to keep your, any comments you make to under three minutes, and if you're speaking about a specific agenda item, keep your comments relevant to that item. Anyone who wishes to be recognized must be called on and recognized by the Mayor. And you may make a statement or ask questions, but if you have multiple questions, please get them all out at once. Anyone speaking out of turn discussing non-German topics or exceeding the time limit may be interrupted. And Donna Bate, our council member, will help us with keeping track of time.
And Jack?
Yes.
My yellow orange doesn't have one minute on it, but that's what it means. And the red means time to stop.
Great, thank you. Okay, the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Has everyone reviewed the agenda? And is there, are there any proposed changes? Okay, the agenda is approved as circulated. Next item on the agenda is general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any item or any topic that is not on the agenda. Again, we ask you to be, to raise your hand either electronically or physically to be recognized. And I will keep an eye on the participant list to make sure that I don't miss anybody. But I'd ask anyone else to chime in if you, if I've missed somebody. Again, the time limit for general business and appearances is, is three minutes. So is there anyone who wants to address a topic that is not on the agenda? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone raising their hands or requesting to be recognized. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any, is there a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I make a motion to move, approve the consent agenda?
Second?
Is there any discussion? Yeah, just one question before you vote. We did get a question from a constituent. I see that they are on the call. I just want to make sure they got the answers to their satisfaction. Thank you. And that's a yes, Linda, great, thank you. Okay, any other question, any other discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Consent agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is item six relating to the update from Casella on the leachate treatment. Bill, you ought to keep that off, because I assume we have someone here from Casella.
Yeah, I'm gonna hand that directly off to DPW at Casella. I see Sam is on, and I'm not sure, I think our DPW folks are here.
Yep, this is Kurt. I'll try to do my camera here. I'm on my phone, computer issues. So yeah, as I wrote in the cover sheet, the initial deadline for leachate treatment was July first. Casella came and did an update, and that was extended until tonight's meeting. And the main concern was the status of permitting. So with that, I'll turn it over to Casella to give an update on the status.
Thanks, Kurt.
Great, thanks Kurt. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Great, I'm Sam Nicolai with Casella, and Joe Gay is with us here today as well. Appreciate the chance to come in and give you an instant update. You may recall, we talked during the May twenty-fourth City Council meeting about the status of our treatment system. At that time, we were awaiting one last permit, which would allow us to proceed forward. And we told you that we expected to get that permit fairly shortly and to be proceeding with the installation of the building and the treatment system later in twenty-three. We're really pleased to report that we did get the permit in the timeframe that we expected. The Act two fifty permit was received on June the thirtieth. We appreciate that the city weighed in and indicated that you'd like to see a timely decision by Act two fifty. And that was certainly the case. Act two fifty did move forward. So that is the last permit, major permit that we need. The, I'm also thrilled to be able to tell you that the building is on order and the contractor is lined up. The treatment system is ordered, and we expect to receive it a little bit later this fall, probably in the August timeframe. And we expect to be installing and running a little bit later this year. So we're consistent entirely with what we shared with you in May. We're really excited about it. We believe that this will be a great solution for treatment of leachate and will allow us to continue to operate, you know, a state-of-the-art facility here at Coventry and continue to work with the city. So happy to take any questions, but, but really pleased that we're on track and moving forward, both with permitting and construction.
Thanks, Sam. I think we're all happy when we got the news that you got the permit approved. Is just, just for the sake of being potentially pessimistic, and I'm not a pessimistic guy, what else could go wrong between now and when you start building?
So we've done a pretty thorough evaluation to try to prevent that from happening. We have the ability already to set up a treatment system within an approved area. So if the building is delayed, we have the ability to move forward without the full construction of the building. But with Joe here, he's done a great job of getting in front of this, having a contractor lined up, having our treatment system basically ready to go. So we feel really good. You know, we always worry, like everybody does, will we see some more flooding? Will we see some other crazy things that could happen to us? But, you know, barring something really unusual, we believe that the treatment system will definitely be onsite and running. We will certainly have kinks to work out. So even when the system is running, you know, week to week, you know, during that initial startup, you know, we're going to have to work through those and ensure that everything is running properly before we get to a hundred percent continuous flow. But we feel really good about it, and I feel strongly that we've prepared ourselves for contingencies and are on track to have system running.
Thanks. Any other members of the council have questions? Lauren?
Yeah, thanks. Great to hear that update, Sam. Just two quick questions. One, just remind me, so this is going to be a pilot project to begin. And would the leachate coming to Montpelier be the pretreated that's going through the pilot? Or would you be sending us untreated as you're doing the pilot program? And then my second question is, I know there was a, there's something about a lawsuit regarding a Nipte's permit. Does that intersect with this at all, or does that raise any potential concerns down the road that would intersect with this project? Or would that have any potential to derail the pre-treatment?
Great questions. So.
Can I jump in before you answer that? For those of us who are not environmental experts like Lauren, what's that permit that you mentioned, Nipte's permit? What's that?
Sure. So I'll tackle the first question first. Our goal in our commitment to the city is to, to bring you treated leachate as quickly as possible. So our goal is to run the system to be able to treat the leachate and bring the treated leachate to Montpelier. It is true that there's nothing stopping us from bringing a mixture of treated, untreated. And it's likely to have that occurring while we're doing startup. But our goal is to treat leachate and treat as much leachate as we can and bring Montpelier treated leachate. And our expectation is that we will be doing that in twenty-twenty-three. So there's certainly no reason not to try to be bringing you treated leachate. So the second question, so what is a Nipte's permit? A Nipte's permit, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, if I get my acronym correctly? It is a permit that derives from the federal government down to the states that allows discharges to occur. There has been some back and forth at the landfill about a Nipte's permit, but it has nothing to do with the system. There is a underdrain at the landfill, which is totally unrelated to leachate. And there has been much discussion about whether that underdrain should be regulated by a Nipte's permit. And ultimately, the agency decided that it was not the case. But regardless of that outcome, it does not, and has never had anything to do with leachate or leachate treatment. It really is a totally separate project. We are essentially discharging under a Nipte's permit. We're discharging under your Nipte's permit. The city has a Nipte's permit for its discharge into the Waduski. And so our leachate by virtue of going to you, under the, first the pre-treatment permit, and then ultimately is discharged under the city's permit, not our permit. I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, go ahead, Lauren.
Yeah, yeah, that does. Thank you. That is really helpful. Just back to the first point then, so we had as a council established a target of twenty parts per trillion in line with, you know, what was, what is the state's drinking water standard as a target for the leachate? Is that going to be feasible to meet, given that, you know, once you have the system online? And even if there's some mixing, if it's getting most of it out? Or are you looking for a, a change to, to that? Just trying to understand what you're going to be asking for from us.
So our goal certainly is to get as much PFAS out as possible. So far, our testing has gotten the five compounds individually down under into single digits. So we're getting the five compounds individually under twenty. Now, the drinking water standard is the sum of the five compounds for twenty. So our goal is to get there. Now, leachate, whether treated or untreated, is not drinking water. No one will be drinking those. But, but Lauren, to your point, that has been our goal, is to get to that point. We're not going to know exactly if we're able to achieve that goal precisely, or if we're going to be a little bit higher than that until we actually go through the pilot testing. But we know that we're going to be really, really close, because we're already producing levels in single digits. And I think our best results are sort of in the thirty to fifty range. We think as we dial that in, we're going to get even lower. But ultimately, you know, the, the agency has asked us to do this pilot test work to figure out how close and how low we can get with this technology. So we're thrilled that we're going to be getting ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent removal. Our goal is certainly to get it as low as we possibly can.
Thanks. Any questions for any other members of the council, Tim?
Thanks, Chuck. Hey, Sam. So a couple of quick questions, just in terms of the Act two fifty permit, is there an appeal period that follows the issuing of that permit?
There is. I believe the general standard is a thirty-day appeal period, and that permit has been appealed. So we, being the, the public company that we are, we frequently have our permits appealed. So that, along with many of our other permits, are in the appeal period. That doesn't stop us from being able to move forward. That appeal process will work, and if someone determines that adjustments need to be made, then we have to act at that time. But from the agency's standpoint and our standpoint, we are good to go, only if, if there is a successful appeal. Could there be a change?
Is the equipment that you're using, is it something you already have? I assume it's specialized equipment, and just knowing my experiences lately with getting anything specialized, or even garage doors, you know, elevator control cards are twenty weeks out. I mean, what's, you know, is it really realistic to have this done this year?
It is. We intentionally did our testing with equipment in advance of, you know, the permitting as we could. So we knew that the treatment system that we wanted, we've had reserved. So it's, it doesn't need to be manufactured. It's sitting on the ground. So it's literally has to be shipped to us as opposed to actually being manufactured. So we're absolutely on track to get the equipment. We did not expect any delays there whatsoever, since the equipment already exists and is literally sitting on the ground to be shipped to us.
Good, thanks.
Any questions from any other members of the council at this point? Okay, looking to members of the public, I see Kason Whiteley, you've got your hand up first. And you are still muted.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Sam. Sam, I had, I wanted to ask a question about a concern that I and many other people have about potential hazards of the treatment system up there, potentially leaching, those toxins leaching into the surrounding watershed, namely the Black River and the South Bay of Lake Memphamagog. I just wonder how that, how you're accounting for that and how, how you propose that that will be contained from having an impact on, a further impact on the environment.
So the leachate, by regulation and, and as well as our own standards, has to be managed in a way to prevent it from spilling. And that's the case whether we're just storing it, whether we are pumping it somewhere, or whether we're treating it. And so the treatment system has to meet the same requirements that we do today for all of our leachate, which means it's got to be within tanks, it's got to be within storage areas with secondary containment. So the treatment system itself doesn't change anything on the site in terms of how we manage leachate. Leachate is, will continue to be collected, it will continue to be put into tanks and containment areas that prevent it from being discharged. And once we treat it, it goes back into a tank, so that it can then be hauled for disposal. So we're very confident in our ability to manage the leachate in a way to prevent any potential release. The treatment will lower the concentrations, which will make the receipt of the material more amenable for the city's wastewater plant. But nothing will change in terms of the site's ability to manage leachate properly and keep it contained. We're very confident in that. It's critical for us to continue to manage that leachate correctly.
Thank you. I just, I just want to also express, you know, the knowledge that the leachate has, has leached into Lake Memphamagog, and everybody knows that. So I just want to make sure that there's additional accommodations being made for this treatment that will prevent that from happening again.
Appreciate your comments. I have to strongly disagree. No leachate has ever made it to Lake Memphamagog, and we have continued to operate the facility in a way to ensure that will never happen. So I know that there have been many folks that expressed concern, but we're very confident that the lake has never been impacted by leachate, and that we will continue to manage it in a way that, that prevent that from happening.
I just want to, I appreciate your, your point of view and, and your commitment to that, to that view. But I, I, I just want to go on record as saying that we know that PFAS have been found in Lake Memphamagog, all the way up to Magog. And so I just want to, I just want to say that that's, that's, you know, been confirmed.
PFAS has certainly been found in surface water bodies, which include Lake Memphamagog. There are a lot of sources of PFAS, as we all know. It's coming from industry, residential areas. Again, we're very confident, and the agency is very confident, that we're preventing any releases to the lake.
Great, thank you. Linda? And you're also muted at the moment.
Yeah, thank you. I have questions for the council. Leachate contains high-strength organic waste, which causes odors. The current odor control system in place after phase one upgrade to the plant was complete, upgrade to the plant was completed, was not meant to filter a leachate tank, is undersized for the volume of material it was expected to process after phase one, and is in, is in poor condition and is not fully functional. The timeline for constructing an appropriate odor control system is December twenty twenty-four to December twenty twenty-five. So my three questions are, one, why aren't you suspending processing high organic waste until the city is fully in compliance with the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation Air Pollution Control Regulations? Number two, what entity authorized again accepting leachate from Casella, and when did this recommence? And three, is Casella's leachate the only leachate we take? And if not, what volume of additional leachate is coming into the plant? And does the total amount exceed the designated capacity of the plant?
Kurt, this might be an answer, a question for you, for starters.
Yep, yep, I can jump in on that. So leachate is not considered high-strength organic waste. That's really the food waste material that we're taking in, fats, oils, and grease primarily. So it's really a totally separate process to handle the high-strength organic waste. It's true that we have odor control issues associated with the high-strength organic waste. The phase two upgrade will address that. We are also planning to include odor control on the leachate tank itself. But we don't believe that leachate is the primary source of odor issues at the plant. I think it's actually very minimal based on the testing that we did. Right now, we're only taking leachate from Coventry. Historically, the plant has taken leachate also from Lemoor Town landfill. Currently, that's not the case, and I think they've found another outlet for that. And so there's no plans to resume leachate receipt from Lemoor Town landfill. I believe the approval for leachate acceptance was in the early two thousands. There was a project that included septic and leachate receiving. And that was included in our Nipte's permit and has been amended with each renewal of the Nipte's permit to allow the city to continue acceptance. If I missed something, Linda, let me know. I think that was the question you had.
Yeah, well, I just would like to respond that I have been reading up about leachate, and by definition, some of it is contained, has contained high organic waste. That's part of the odor issue, part of it. The other issue about leachate was the business manager had informed me that there are other sources of leachate coming into the, to the plant other than Coventry. So if she's incorrect, then she needs to, somebody in the business office needs to be corrected about that.
Yep, there could be small traces amount of organic waste in the leachate, but it's really, the, the project, the high-strength organic waste project was primarily focused on, on food waste materials, fats, oils, and greases. And I'm not sure you talked to it in the business office, but like I said, we used to take Lemoor Town landfill, but that, but currently, we, we do not, and we do not have plans to resume that.
Also add that we, in terms of revenue, we categorize septic and leachate as a revenue line. And so it's possible, and I don't, you know, it's possible that septic receipts would be from different sources other than leachate. And someone could look at that and say, we're getting it from multiple sources.
So I guess what I'm hearing is you're not considering leachate as an issue in the, meeting the violation requirements of the DEC.
Well, no, we, we do plan to have odor control on the leachate receiving tank. But based on the testing that we've done with our consultant, that's very low levels of offensive orders. It's primarily coming from, you know, the high-strength organic waste receiving system. And then secondary from the septic processing building, this is kind of the second highest source of odors. But we will include treatment, odor treatment on the leachate tank as well.
Thanks, Kurt. Thanks, Linda. Before we move on, are there any other questions or comments from members of the public? And then we'll return back to the council. Donna, I saw you raising your hand.
I just can't hear you all the time, Jack. You seem to move, that's all. So I was just trying to get, listen, everybody's at different volumes, so I keep adjusting my speaker, sorry.
Thanks, sorry about that. Lauren?
Yeah, I was just going to propose that based on what we've heard tonight, that we update our standard that January first, twenty twenty-four, we'll accept leachate up to twenty parts per trillion. So just kind of move the date to January first. I, you know, I hear Sam that they're, they're working really hard to meet that standard. I want to keep pushing for hitting that standard. We could always come back, and if there's some tweak that needs to be made, we could have that discussion. But I think having that timeline, keep, try to, try to do our part to keep everything on track for as quick a construction and, and even just, you know, the mixing that could be done with untreated leachate. I want to, I want us to be getting as clean of leachate as possible. So that would be my proposal.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? Tim?
Okay, sorry. So the only question I've got is, so our meeting, kind of basically, we ended up playing with the dates for this one, would be, if we have one, the week of the holidays, would be, oh, actually, December twentieth? No, it would be the second and fourth Wednesday is when we meet, right?
Yeah.
So then it would be December twenty-seventh.
Which we probably won't have a meeting.
January one, should we make it line up with the meeting, assuming we have a meeting during the holidays?
Right, typically, so following Tim's logic there, it would be the January ten meeting. We would probably meet on January third for budget, but that's usually, a budget meeting, the next regular meeting would be January ten. If, if you want to line it up with six months. Does that make sense to you, your motion that way, to January tenth?
Sure.
All right, Kurt?
I just have a clarifying question on that. So the city is currently taking small amounts of leachate, approximately one truckload a day. Does that, is the intent of the council to allow us to continue that level of leachate acceptance? Or is it the council's intention to suspend all leachate acceptance?
Lauren, go ahead.
In my proposal, I was kind of continue business as usual until January, and at that point, we would put in place the twenty-part per trillion standard for PFAS and leachate.
And city clerk, is that clear enough to you to have that be the form of a motion?
It'd be great if it could be restated, especially with what Kurt said. I'm not sure how to fold that in.
Okay.
Yeah, just one, one more point, that we were planning to move to two loads a day, you know, following this meeting. So if, if we could also clarify, if we're allowed to go up to that level until January first, you know, it would help the city's finances. You know, we have a lot of, you know, expenditures related to the flood, so every little bit helps. But we'll leave it to the council to make that decision.
Tim?
I don't favor increasing the amount. We're eighty-one hundred gallons a day. I assume that's weekdays? That's still a hundred eighty thousand gallons a month of this material that's still rolling right down the Waduski River to Lake Champlain to a lot of people's water supplies. I think we've got to keep the pressure on to deal with this thing, and I don't want to accept any more of it.
Okay. Lauren, do you want to try to rephrase your motion so we can then? Lauren, do you want to try to rephrase your motion so we can then continue to discuss it?
So I propose our policy is to. Allow current levels of leachate acceptance. At the Water Resource Recovery Facility until January tenth. At which point. PFAS levels cannot exceed twenty parts per trillion.
Or can we just agree to stop it January tenth, Lauren? You make it a hard stop, producer.
Uh, Lauren, or Donna, you have your hand up.
I, I really like if we stop and we assess it at the time. Uh, and I would second the motion that she stated.
Okay, so there's the, the motion is continuing current practices up till January tenth and um. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion by members of the council? Hey Linda, I see you have your hand up. Uh, can you? Get something in in thirty seconds?
Yes, again, one, um, I'm still not clear on when we started accepting leachate again. I know that the council had stopped it. And then I started seeing line items in the budget where it was being accepted again. I'm not clear about that. Number two, the council isn't considering the air quality issues of the leachate. I'm, I understand PFAS is huge and I don't dispute that. But you're also under an order from the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation to deal with the air quality issues. So continuing to accept leachate, leachate is, although it's not the only part of the problem, as Kurt indicated, it is a part of the problem.
Okay, thank you. Um, council, are you ready to vote on the motion? If so, all those signify by saying aye.
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 Hi.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, we'll have a, we required to have a roll call, uh, vote, uh, bait.
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alfonso? So you're muted.
Aye.
Uh, Hini?
No.
And Earl?
In the car.
I'm sorry, uh, Lauren, you said aye. Lauren, did we lose you?
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, okay.
Okay, sorry, yes, I said aye.
Okay, uh. The motion carries. Thank you. Um, folks, thanks for uh for. Your presentation and uh members of the public, thank you for uh for all your. Comments and observations. Um. We're moving next to the item about the Greenway Institute regarding purchase of uh Vermont College of Fine Arts Buildings. And, and this is on because uh very recently I received uh. Uh, texts and emails from Rebecca Holcomb about this project and. And they're working on putting together all their financing and they're asking us to. Sign off on a statement that uh that the city, city supports their proposal to. Move their new, uh, to create this new educational program at uh this, you know, VCFA buildings. And so. Uh, I talked to Bill about this and we put it on the agenda for tonight. Um, Bill, do you have anything to add? Okay, so. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Or comments?
It looks like an excellent opportunity.
Yeah, Carrie.
Thanks. Um, so just a couple of quick things. Um. Their, my pillar is misspelled at one point in here, so I think that's really important to correct. Um. And I, uh, so when I read through this, I um. I feel like there's a few, you know, in general, it's fine, I'm fine with it, but there are a few statements in here that I, I don't know that I have enough information to really get behind. Um, I, you know, I don't know what the presence of students will actually be. I don't know how many they're talking about. I don't know how long they're gonna be here. I don't know if that's really gonna bring any meaningful revenue to downtown businesses. Um, maybe, um. I'm, I don't know, I don't have any information at all about this program supporting incubation of new businesses. That will bring revenues and high quality, higher wage jobs to the region. So I just feel like it's, I'd be fine with saying. This can, you know, we're, we don't have, we don't see an adverse impact. We, we feel like it's consistent with our, our um strategic goals and we're fine with it. And that's probably all that they need, right? But um, I also wasn't sure why. Every other paragraph is italicized and uh seems like, is there some copying and pasting going on? So it's just a, a little odd there.
Yeah, it's true that she, she sent me this and she told me it, it doesn't. Have, there's no magic formula that the, that it has to be and. And I think you're probably right about the cutting and pasting for the italics and, and I think if uh, if the motion. Uh, tracks what you just said, I think that would probably be sufficient to meet their needs. Uh, Donna.
Oh, I, I guess I thought they may be overstated, but indeed, when we had other colleges there, we found students interfacing, some staying and starting new businesses. So I didn't think it was totally. Off, just maybe a little extreme. They stated, that's all.
Anyone else on the council have any thoughts? Um, yeah, so.
Uh, I just saw this for the first time. I guess it wasn't, it wasn't there, at least when I accessed the agenda earlier today. Um. I kind of agree that it's, it's a little, a little overstated. I mean, I, I, I know. Virtually nothing about this program other than the sort of outline that we, you know, we received. Um. So I, I would, I would uh prefer to have it toned, toned down somewhat and um along the lines of, of what Carrie's suggesting.
I'll direct a question to the clerk. Um. Were the comments of councillor Brown sufficient to formulate a, a motion that we could uh vote on?
Well, um. They were specific. Um, I, I, I would say, I guess, yes, a little odd, but. But there, there was enough there that I can, you know, I, I can just essentially transcribe that and it is. You know, cohesive enough to be a motion.
Could you just, uh, I'm taking a look at this, uh. If, maybe if you just, if we just deleted everything after, so what was it? Students bring youth and energy to our community. That seems pretty. Inocuous, but then everything after that starts sort of. Getting into specifics, sort of take everything out after that and leave the rest. I think that's what I heard council member Brown saying. Carrie, does that work for you?
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
With the correct spelling of my pillar right above there.
Yeah. Because that's a real place. It's, and it's not here.
Right. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there any other uh discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, thank you. We've adopted uh that resolution. Now we're up to item number eight, which I suspect is the uh. Main thing that people are here to talk about, which is flood and flood recovery updates. And I think we'll start by Andy Atiyuba. So um, I think what we were hoping to do tonight, I was gonna give you a quick update on city infrastructure. And we have most of the key department heads here who could talk about anything in, in uh. More detail. I was gonna quickly go over the frequently asked questions that we published. I'm not gonna read them all. They're, they're lengthy, but at least hit the main topics. And then afterward, uh, if then, if there's anything that any of our staff want to add that I, I missed, I'd like them to do that. And then after that, we turn it over to the council to answer any questions or respond to any comments, or and the public, of course, uh, that people may have. Because we know there's, there's a lot out there. So if that sounds okay to people, that's how I'll proceed. If you'd like me to do something different, then I could do that. But works, works for me. Okay, so quickly for city infrastructure, uh, city, August going down building by building, uh, city hall, the cleaning is completed. The, the cleaning company has come out of the building. That's, it's still a long way from being usable. But uh they've turned it back over to us, so uh the elevator is still out of uh, out of uh whack. The generator still needs to be fixed. Uh, we have to move a bunch of systems out of the basement and up and figure that out. Uh, our, the memorial room and council chambers are still just packed full with boxes and things that moved up from downstairs that didn't get wet. Uh, but needed a place to go. Uh, we've got. Conversations with the teen center about whether it makes sense for them to come back to this space or to seek other space. Uh. And then, of course, we need to start our own decision making process internally and with you as a council about how we put the puzzle pieces back together. Uh, so I know everyone is plenty busy right now, but we'd be happy to walk you through the building. Uh. You know, to see the shape that it's in. Uh, downstairs is really just walls and studs and, um, you know, it's really, it's really a shell of. A, a building right now, but it does have a clean floor. Uh, so here's. Well, with regard to the uh, to city hall, I believe I heard uh early on that there was, there were mold issues and I wonder. Yeah, those have been addressed. Um, and you know, there's still, I, I think it's still gonna need to air out a little bit longer before we want to have a lot of people in there. Uh, one side, the, the finance office uh side, uh, that. I think needs some carpeting and some sheet rock put back, but that could be functional, you know, relatively soon, maybe, uh, assuming the other systems were, go. Uh, but, but we're still a long way from uh really fully reoccupying that building. Uh, a lot of decisions left to be made. Police station is generally functional. The elevator is out and they've had some issues with their phones. I, I. Think they're corrected, but if Eric is on, he can correct me about that. Fire station, uh, fire department is back using the fire basement, but fire. There is still uh their first floor, uh, not the apparatus room, but the offices in the back have been cleaned out, so they've, they're gonna decide. About what, how to put those back. And then there is some structural damage in the back. Uh, that is starting to collapse, uh, and it has to do with their basement access, so we've got to figure that out. And uh maybe correct, for those of you who've never been out behind the fire station, there's an old ramp that goes down to the basement, and that's just a perfect place to funnel water. If uh, whenever we have one of these events. So we're thinking maybe there's a way we can correct that access to the basement. Is, and, and that's also where the structural failure is. So that's still working. Uh. DPW of course has uh three pump stations out of four that were underwater damaged. They are uh in the process of getting those completed. There are road washouts around the city. We just signed a contract today for, if those of you going, go up Main Street have seen, um, if you're going up the hill on the left, there's a pretty big sinkhole that. We believe is a collapsed sewer pipe, and that needs to be completely replaced and fixed uh to stop that washout. Uh, there's also a big problem with Prospect Street. There's a, a wa- you know, an undermining of the, the hill, so we're trying to take care of that. So those are big projects and some small ones. Uh, the debris clearing, of course, is the biggest effort that they're coordinating. That's pretty visible around town. And uh DPW and Through Avalance are trying to give everybody update each day of the progress made and where they're going to be the next day. I know we get a lot of questions about, you know, when are they gonna be in my neighborhood? The answer is, we, we, we don't know for sure because they're. They're really seeing what they can accomplish in one day and then where the next, you know, what the next day's effort is, it would be best spent doing. Uh, so they're often just a day. Ahead of scheduling. So, you know, we know that they're gonna get everything done in two to three weeks, but we can't say for sure we're going to this street or that street the next, next week, yeah. Recreation Department, Dog River, Dog River Field is completely flooded and is um unusable. Uh, so that happened in twenty eleven as well. Uh, so we're taking a look to see what uh kind of coverage can be there or whether. Uh, uh, we could use funds to sort of build a field somewhere else, uh, and maybe convert that to different use. Uh, but that is, you know, out, out of commission for this season for sure. The rec center has been used uh for storage of a lot of the facilities that we, a lot of the donations and supplies that we've received. It's now gonna be converted into use for a disaster recovery center for FEMA for the next thirty days or so. Uh, so. Uh, that's great. We have that facility. It's great that it's handy to downtown, uh, but it does mean that. In terms of impact on programs, it's not available for basketball, pickleball and some of the other rec uses. So. Uh, Country Club Road Site has been used uh to store new uh trash containers. People see trash containers up there. We clear those have been newly delivered. They've never had trash in them. They're being used there until they can be deployed somewhere else. Uh, and those kind of things, uh, and some of the trucks are staging up there. Uh, and then we are obviously looking at other things. Uh, finance. Planning clerk, my pillar alive and justice center are all functioning at senior center on the second floor, uh, or justice center, in their case, the first floor. And until we figure out what we're gonna do with city hall and how to bring them back, that. Transition has now been completed and is functional. That does however leave the city senior center with two uh. Activity rooms that they've traditionally used that are now taken up with offices. So there's a negative impact on senior center. Uh, we are looking to see if we can move some of their activities to the Alex, for Alex Club Building, at least temporarily, uh, until we get the. To get the offices back in the city hall. And lastly, the hub, uh, the lack of better name, the hub section there, uh, with all the tents in my pillar alive, uh, the volunteer hub is winding down. Uh, you know, the, the intense activity is, you know, there's no more uh food happening there. Uh, Al's French Rais is closing up as of today. This was their last day of serving. Uh, you know, the big rush of volunteers is over. They're still doing the volunteer management and pairing. So if you are. A building owner or a business owner and you need help, please ask. They still have the list of volunteers. Uh, and they'll, will still be managing that, but there will not be as much of a presence after this week at that twelve to sixteen Main Street site. FEMA has had uh people sitting there this week and have had a lot of business of people just walking up. That was. A request of ours that they do that and they, they have done it now. As I said, they're gonna be setting up their recovery center at the rec center, so they will have a, a place. So um, that's kind of the status of city infrastructure right now. We, you know, just on our own, we've got plenty going on. Um, if there's anybody from the city staff uh that wants to add that I'm, something I missed, I'd welcome that. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands going up. Yeah, okay, good. Star, county council members, do you have any questions on this part of the presentation before we uh move on? Carrie.
Yeah, thank you for all that. Um, so I know that uh the city has been, I know you've been. Devoting every, every moment of your time and your energy and your thoughts. To all of this, and I really appreciate it. And I know how complex it is, and I know that it's gonna keep going for a long time. Um, and so as we're thinking about the future of operations within the city hall building itself. Um, we've, I know there's been kind of some thoughts tossed around about. Trying to get everything possible out of the basement and just thinking in terms of when this happens again, because it's gonna happen again. And so we need to be going forward, we need to be thinking always in terms of what happens the next time we get a flood like this, or maybe even a worse one. And so I, I know it's very early and you don't have plans yet, but can you just share some of the, the discussions, the thinking? The possibilities that you're tossing around for the future of that building and how it will be used?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so I think, I think you're right. I mean, that's exactly been the, the top thing is what, you know, what. Question do we not want to answer next time that we, you know, we could have done this time? And uh, so I think the number one thing is looking at all of our systems that need to come up. Uh, even the elevator, mechanicals, everything uh that we can get up onto the first floor and out of the basement as possible. And, and then what might be left, the boilers and things like that, how we can harden and protect them even, you know, better than we have, knowing that that's imperfect. But um, and so then, so I think this, the general assumption without, without uh having done any design is that. The best place for all those mechanicals would be, you know, in the back of what we call the memorial room now, you know, so that room. You, you know, there's an already closet there that has. So that room, you know, there's an already closet there that has all our computer equipment, which was moved up, uh, to avoid this situation. So thank goodness for that. Uh, but you know, I can almost picture like that front going all the way across the back of that room with all of our other mechanical stuff in the back of there, which then makes the council chamber memorial room much smaller. Uh, and I think the next consideration would be to probably convert that to offices so that we have no offices downstairs. And, um, so with computers, desks, personal materials, files, all, you know, those kind of important things that, that we lost. And, you know, probably having some form of, you know, meeting spaces, community spaces, those kind of things in the basement. If you go through it now with the walls down, it's a pretty large space. Uh, so you know, I think part of it is what, what, a, and do we put the offices back where they came from? Or do we, you know, is there a way to make our functions more efficient as we, is everybody's out? If we move everybody back into a different place, maybe there's a better way to do it. But, um, but I think, uh, you know, I, I think our general thinking is not to have anything of huge value in the basement. Meeting space is important, of course, generally day in, day out. And, you know, it might be that we would lose some, you know, thinking about the current council chamber. I mean, most of the cameras and things are up high, uh, but maybe the, you know, it might be the console that runs a, a video system, maybe a TV, you know, there, there would be things that could get lost, but they might be in the tens of thousands and not hundreds of thousands of dollars. And, you know, a meeting table and some chairs, uh, versus the kind of actual operational losses that we suffered this time. And especially with, you know, the ability to run things virtually, we have, it's not ideal, but we have a backup, you know, option. So w- we're really at the front end of this, but that's, that is what we're thinking. And, and I think we probably will seek some, you know, architectural help or something to think about programming and what's needed. And then obviously engage the city council. This is your building, is communities building into what, what needs to be there. And obviously we need to have a functioning elevator, but it needs to have its, you know, part of the reason it's not functioning now is its mechanical system got flooded. And that mechanical system can be on any floor, so why keep it in the basement? Just because that's where it always was, so, um, those are the kind of things. And the generator, same, same thing, so.
Lauren?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, throw out an, uh, idea that I've been thinking about and really coming out of a lot of conversations that I've been having with residents and business owners and a lot of people just spending a lot of time thinking about, you know, what are we doing right now to develop plans and make sure that we're making our community more resilient to floods and our changing climate? Um, you know, I think tonight is a great opportunity to start getting feedback. Um, I am hoping we could create a space, um, for the community to come together, um, ideally with an outside facilitator who could help, um, really start a, a process and a conversation in the community. You know, we've been seeing a lot of ideas, a lot of, you know, how do we build ourselves in a different way and make sure that we're not just rebuilding? You know, we've got, we're talking about city hall right now, but, you know, all the businesses and all the homeowners who are impacted too. You know, how can we be together, working to, to create, um, a more resilient community, um, knowing that there will be more floods? And so I'm really interested in, um, exploring, uh, community conversation with an outside facilitator. I've talked to, um, some amazing folks. We have such resources in our community who, um, have real expertise in convening this kind of conversation. And there's, I think, a willingness and eagerness and generosity to, to partner with us on this. Um, and so I'm very interested in exploring this and just wanted to, um, get councils, um, kind of feedback on if that kind of initial meeting and potentially leading to a bigger community conversation and process to look at, you know, real strategies that can be actionable for flood resilience, um, just if there's interest. And if so, I'm very happy to spearhead some work and bringing some people together to think that through more, but just wanted to throw it out.
Well, I'll jump in first and just say, yes, I think this is a great idea. I think it's great that you have come up with this, Lauren. And I think that, uh, Lord knows in the next, uh, six months, we'll have plenty of work to do as a council that, uh, if we could also have outside professional facilitators, uh, who have, uh, who are experienced and, uh, and respected in the community. I think that would be, uh, a tremendous, uh, benefit to the city. I see some other heads nodding, if any other council members have any comments to make. Yeah, Lauren, or sorry, sorry Donna.
It's okay. You called on whoever.
You're up, you're up Donna.
I just wanted to second that and I would hope that we can really ask for volunteers. We have a lot of professionals in our community. I mean, we are cash, cash short. And so I think it's very appropriate that we can, we could ask more than ma, many people in our community who might help facilitate the small groups as well as the large. I mean, there might be ways to do this, whether it's online or in person, depending on what kind of spaces we can find in the future.
Tim? Tim, you did have your hand up a minute ago. Did you put it down or?
I was just gonna say, I agree with Lauren. I think it's a great idea. I think we, it's truly master planning that we need to look ahead. And, um, you know, and even with city hall, I think we just have to have a very open view about how that building will be used in the future. Um, and I know we've got some neat things going there, but there's also a lot of great space upstairs. And, and I think we've got to look openly at how we can use it. Maybe city council meetings go upstairs too. I mean.
And, um, so.
Uh, yes, I, I, I agree as well. I, I think, um, I, 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 I'm welcome the, the, the idea of getting the, getting the community together to come up with a, um, with, with a, hopefully a long list of potential solutions to explore, um, for both short term, but also for long term. I mean, I, I agree that I, I mean, I, I can't possibly predict, uh, uh, but I, I can't imagine that this won't, won't happen again. And I don't think that that's acceptable, frankly. I think we should push for a solution that makes it as unlikely as possible, much as they must have done after nineteen twenty-seven, um, which helped us a lot, uh, a hundred years later. Um, so I, I don't know if, if it can be done in the same process, but I think we ought to plan not only for the kind of solution that would, um, would help with things like the, the changes we've made in, um, the hazard, uh, the river hazard area and so on, but also, um, large scale, um, projects that, that might actually make this, um, more unlikely than likely in the future.
Thanks, Sal. Carrie?
Yeah, I also think this is a great idea. Um, I, uh, I, I like the idea of kind of ha, starting off with a, a chance for people to think kind of in the short term, because there were, you know, lots of questions and, uh, I'm sure lots of people have ideas for things that could have been done a little bit differently, that like some, there was some information that could have come from the state, that didn't come from the state or, um, didn't come quickly enough, things like that, that I think would be really helpful for us as a city to compile and give that feedback and say, this is what would be helpful for the next time this kind of thing happens. But then also that ongoing, much longer term discussion about resiliency and about how we, um, you know, if we could turn back time and tell the people who first started building along the river in Montpelier, if we could tell them, maybe you wanna move back a little bit and not build right by the river, but we can't do that. So, and we're not gonna move downtown Montpelier somewhere else. So then what can we do though, rather than just, um, hoping it doesn't happen again or scrambling around again the next time? So, so I, I love this idea. Thank you, Lauren, for, for bringing it up and, um, happy to support in whatever way I can.
Okay, thanks. Bill, I know we kind of interrupted in the middle of your presentation, but I also see some, uh, some community members' hands up. And so I'll start calling on them because I think they're probably interested in this topic too, starting with Linda Young.
Hi, I'm Linda Young. I live over on Winter Street and I have a question about the debris pickup. Um, and this is not an indictment in any way, just a ju, genuine question. Um, I went over to Barry last Wednesday to support their farmer's market and was stunned by how clean the downtown looked. Drove right down Main Street. There was one dumpster and otherwise everything was just completely clean, which was a stark contrast, obviously, to what we were looking at. Um, so I'm just curious, what, what, how did we end up in that position? Was it just a difference in degree in what we were experiencing in our downtown? Or, um, a difference in what our contractors were able to do? I think it'd be helpful to just know how that.
And I, I've been asked that question a lot and, um, I went over to Barry myself and checked it out. Um, Barry's downtown didn't get flooded really at all. There was a little bit of water in some basements. The massive amount of flooding that happened, if you're familiar, you know, with sort of Mr. Z's down toward the Salvation Army, that area, that's where all their flooding is. And there, they just began their debris removal, uh, yesterday. Uh, so they're actually about a week and a half behind us on that. Um, that's where all their debris is that, that, so you're right, you go through their core downtown and you think, how, how did they get so clean so fast? Um, they didn't have the mess that we had with the basement type thing. So they, they had massive flooding. They've had a lot of home losses. Uh, they've got a ton of debris, but it's in a different part of town and to, you know, of a different nature.
Thanks, Bill. Um, Karen Golden, Golden, I hope I'm pronouncing your name right.
Uh, it's Sharon, but thank you. Uh, first I just want to, I'm, I'm a, I'm a Montpelier resident for thirty-six years and, um, uh, and, um, retired about a year and a half ago from the Vermont Department of Health. I was the director of operations, the head of the continuity of operations planning and of course, a role with, uh, whenever Vermont Emergency Management was open. Uh, I, I want to say that congratulations to, uh, the city manager, to Bill and to the, uh, mayor and, and council. This was a Herculean task you had to take on very quickly. And coming from one event that might have happened several years ago is not gonna be the same event moving forward. But, um, I, I was wondering a couple of things, uh, and I was first like to look at the, um, um, the, uh, continuity of oper, operations plan of the city, not, not physically look at it. Um, cause there was some conflicting information that came out. You know, there were so many emails or, uh, uh, front porch forum and then, uh, other emails that were coming out. And there was one I recalled that came out that said that the, um, city management was looking at where they are moving their, their various departments to, which, uh, kind of struck me as, is there a strong enough continuity of operations plan? That type of plan is obviously a little bit different than what you've just been talking about, about bringing the community in. Uh, the continuity of operations plan is where are your three locations that you are, have pre-wired, that's your incident command structure and that you're working out of so that you get there quickly and you can begin business of running the city while dealing with the event? You might have that, I don't know that.
Yeah, so I, yeah, if I may respond to that, cause I, so we do have a continuity of operations plan and we actually executed it. Um, you know, I think that we, uh, I, I, we haven't responded to every comment that's been made just because you can't. Uh, but we actually trained on this exact transition a few years ago where we moved our operations to the senior center, uh, yeah, which is where we've moved them to. Uh, the only difference was at that point, we had trained on a, like it was a temporary one day type job as opposed to permanent fix. Uh, so that was what we had to, that was the difference. So we were, we knew where we were going and we were able to do so pretty quickly. Um, it was just getting things like copiers and things like that that were destroyed. And we, we wouldn't preload those, uh, phone systems. And the other major continuity operations was moving our operations center up to the water treatment plant because we had always anticipated that the biggest disaster we'd probably deal with would be flooding. And it would have packed the middle of our, our town. And, you know, as I think I said before, we actually moved our dispatch center at four in the morning from, uh, its downtown location to the water treatment plant along with Barry's because their plan was to come in with us, which they did. Uh, and we did that without missing a single, uh, E nine one one call. Uh, so all of those plans were in place and, and executed and, um, had been practiced. Although it, um, I, it's funny now, it wasn't funny that night. Uh, but we had just been talking about actually in August, um, doing another run of practicing them.
Yes, and, and.
We got a good, uh, uh.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. You've always got it, you've got, you've got to always exercise the plan.
Exactly, but.
I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that, that there was, because some of the information coming out, it di, it seemed a little bit, um, off, off. Um, but I'm glad there is a plan. I, I would just suggest you look at a one day, a one week, a two week and then beyond.
Thanks, Donna. And Sharon, that's, uh, there's a signal of one minute left, so let's, let's let Bill finish answering the question.
The, the only other last thing I'd wanna say is the Vermont College buildings. I think we have some opportunities as things, uh, arrive to the city that is there a way to negotiate use of those properties in the event of emergency, whatever who becomes the new owners, if that wasn't done yet?
Okay, thank you. Bill, did you have anything you needed to add to the, to what you've already told us? I think it was a pretty complete answer.
No, and I only, no, I think I've covered it except to say that we, you know, we have been in contact with Vermont College, uh, throughout this disaster about possibilities. And, you know, they're in a funny situation because they're about to sell. Uh, so there's, I, I think, uh, we, we have already had outreach from the new, potential new owners and we hope that we can work out, um, a, again, that kind of contingency planning with that.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you. Alyssa Sharon?
Hi, thank you. Um, I just wanted to speak in support of Lauren's idea. Um, thank you for bringing that up. It would be great to be able to do that even sooner than later, if possible. Um, I think it would be really good to re-envision together what this could look like. I've been working with, um, Christ Episcopal Church, which has really flooded and we're in active conversations last night about, do we raise up the flooring right now? And we have people coming in to do that and you're just wondering like, it, you know, uh, there's all these questions about where the resources could come in for things like that too. And I know that FEMA has some grants, you know, perhaps that we could access as a city through the public administration program or the flood mitigation assistance program that they were talking to me about when I was meeting with them the other day. And so I know we're making a lot of choices. I'm sure, Tim, you must be thinking about like, well, what resources, if I did these mitigations in some of my buildings, could I get back and reimbursed for, um, because some of that you can. And so perhaps also having someone from FEMA or, you know, the SBA program on site to answer questions that might come up during a conversation like that could be really helpful. Um, also I would, um, thank you so much, all the work folks have been doing in the city. It's, it's amazing, you know, Herculean really. Um, so thank you for everything that you're doing. And I would love to hear what grants you are thinking about applying for. I know that is like a second phase, you know, when I was meeting with FEMA recently, they said, we're doing the individual phase, the business phase through the SBA loan. And then we're gonna have these experts on site that can talk about the, the grants that we're, are going to be helping on the resilience side and that maybe those folks would be more based in Waterbury than in the Montpelier Berlin area. But I'd just love to hear from the city on like what you're thinking about applying for and how we could be considering this in a revisioning, um, conversation. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Thanks, Alyssa.
Um, so I, I was Mike, so I would say we're trying to understand what's available, first of all. Uh, yeah, and also there, we, we, uh, you know, like a lot of operations, we're dividing and conquering. So, uh, obviously we're trying to get our own city operations and, uh, general community put back together and provide that kind of logistic support on the ground and making sure that we're tracking everything we're doing so that we can be, you know, reimbursed for every nickel we can get back from FEMA. Mike and his department, Mike Miller Planning Department, are already starting to think about the long-term funding and grants and opportunities. And I think, you know, I, I just wanted to add, by the way, that, uh, from staff perspective, we were a hundred percent on board with the, the proposal of Lauren. I think it'd be great to have a community conversation about, you know, if we're gonna, if we have big changes, people need to be on board with them. So rather than have the city manager and the city council force something down people's throats, I think having, having a, a big buy-in about how we go in the future and if we're gonna invest local resources, what that looks like. So, uh, uh. So all, all in on that and I, um, so Mike, do you want to weigh in on funding what we know right now?
Yeah, I guess the best I can say at this point, Josh Jerome has been um, doing most of the homework on this. There are, there are some, because we have a hazard mitigation plan, there's some hazard mitigation funds that can also help. Uh, there's uh, there's what we call brick funding, there is FMA funding. So we're looking at a whole bunch of options. And we have a planning meeting scheduled for tomorrow with staff to kind of start laying out, you know, and, and you know, needs in one column. And the grant opportunities in another, so we can start understanding. Where we should direct our efforts first, because we obviously can't apply for five different grants all at the same time. We're gonna have to pick which is, which is the one that's going to have the best bang for the buck. And, and make that proposal, make that pitch to Bill and to you guys that we recommend X, then Y, then Z. Um, and, and kind of get our education done and then try to get you guys educated on what the options are. Um, but we do recognize FEMA has a limited amount of uh, options for direct assistance. And most of the rebuilding going forward, if there's going to be financial assistance, it's going to probably be passed through funds. Through the planning office. Um, and so we've got, um, you know, we, we have two buckets, we're working on a. We've got our regulatory requirements, we're trying to make sure we get the message out on what the requirements are that people have to meet for our flood hazard rules. And then we've got our program side, you know, you have to do this and how can we help you do it? So we kind of have two hats going at once right now.
Um, thank you for that.
One thing I wanted to add to, which might help Alyssa, is that I, I forgot to put this in my overview. We're also working on uh, engaging FEMA consultant, you know, people that specialize in navigating the way through FEMA. Uh, right, the state has a person, a, a, a company on contract that we're looking, we think we can purchase them through that state contract without having to go through. But there are others. So we have people that speak the language and know what they're doing and that is reimbursable. So meant to put that in my first statement.
That's really smart, I think. Um, you know, I feel like after one, one hour conversation, I have just enough information to be dangerous and probably not fully accurate. And so having folks on hand who are much more expert on this is really, would be great. And I guess just one thing that I took away from the conversation and just any business owners might also have as a takeaway is that some of these rebuilding, if you do rebuild in a more resilient way, there is the possibility that you can get reimbursed for that later. Through some of the city funding, should you get those types of grants. I know a bunch of that's up in the air. But that was very, so obviously, we all need to be keeping our receipts and, you know, making the decisions. But there is some incentive to not just build back in the same way, it seems to me. Do you think that's fair to say?
Was, was that a yes, Bill?
Like you're not in the grant funding.
I hope so. I think, you know, I, I think my personal view, and this isn't necessarily, you know, I, I don't, I can't, I don't have enough knowledge about what FEMA offers. But I feel like we as a community need to um, figure out what is the right way to rebuild. And we need to figure out with, along with the state, how to provide the resources for people to do that. You know, I think it's got to be more than just, you gotta do this, I think. Because there's winners and losers, no matter, you know, I mean, uh, winners and losers may not be the right way to put it. But for example, the, the dams that saved us. You know, there are properties upstream that got flooded because of those dams, right? So um, for every action you have, somebody's paying a price for it. And you know, way back when people lost their homes in order to build those dams. So um, I think as we think about, yes, we want a resilient community. So say, for instance, we want to fill in basements and raise things up, you know, building owners and business owners are going to bear those costs. And um, you know, maybe lose, you know, I'm looking at City Hall, we're going to move all these things upstairs, great. We're going to lose a whole bunch of space in one of our buildings. Well, that's great, we're not leasing it by the square foot. But if you are, that's an issue. So how do you assist people with doing that in a way that's? You know, helping our community sustain itself in the long run and still making the right decisions. And I think that's where our community could, you know, conversation needs to happen, to get to a place where everyone, you know, there's not sort of one side pointing. One group of people pointing to another group saying, here, you fix it.
Tim, it looked like you had a, a response specifically to something Mike was saying, so I'm going to call on you now.
Yeah, I'm struggling with the, the, the two directions of the conversation. One is this, you know, planning for resiliency, you know, looking forward, really giving it deliberate thought and trying to create positive results and support. Property owners uh, to improve properties to make them safer and have better longevity for the future. And then I look at the communications coming out from the city right now and, and from Mike's office and it's really kind of heavy-handed. Um, it's causing a lot of people, a lot of stress and anxiety. And it just doesn't feel right to me, because I, you're, you're presenting things, or we're presenting things to the city government as if they're edicts. And you have to move everything up right now. We're in the middle of a crisis. People are spending huge amounts of their money and resources just to try to stabilize. Um, these systems that need to be moved up, electrical systems, heating systems, all that. We're working on it, it takes time and a lot of money and it needs to be done deliberatively, not knee-jerk right now, where we're in the middle of a crisis. And, and I think these communications, I have friends who are really stressing because they just need to fix a furnace. And their heating person shows up and says, gosh, the city's saying we have to move it upstairs. Um, is that true?
So uh, the answer is, is yes, that's why we have the, we're talking about temporary and permanent fixes. In some cases, we have people who are making permanent changes and they only want to spend the money once. So they're like, I've got a limited amount of money, I don't want to spend something to make a temporary fix. So that way next year I have to make a permanent fix. I would rather make the permanent fix now. So what we're trying to do is to get the word out that the, the answer is all, uh, uh, all of these temporary fixes. The permanent fix is the utilities, and when we say utilities, we're referring to like your electric panels, your furnace. Um, tying down tanks. So if you, if you had a tank, whether it's propane or an oil tank that got dislodged, that's going to require an engineer's certificate. These are just some of the, the major things that have occurred that people are going to need to be aware of. So they don't make a quick fix and spend some money and then have to redo and lose some money. And in some cases, the answer is, I gotta do a temporary fix now. You know, I'll have to spend five hundred dollars now to spend a thousand dollars later, because I don't just, I'm not ready to make that thousand dollars now. But the flood hazard rules, the, the flood hazard rules are very, they're, they're very strict and they've come down. Um, because so many people in so many communities, this isn't, this isn't um, directed at anyone in Montpelier. This is nationally, so many communities simply go through and say, I gotta get back on my feet, I'm just going to fix things. And then they never get around to making those other repairs and moving those things up. Um, and then by the time these programs come, it's, it's not available. That's why FEMA has been continuing to tighten the regulatory rules to try to get more and more of these things moved up at the time that they happened. Um, and so that's why, you know, we're in a tough spot, we're trying to work with people to let them know, make the temporary repairs. We don't want anyone losing their house because they don't have electricity. Fix the panel, get the electricity. Um, we're trying to get in touch with the hardest hit, because those are the ones who really have some hard decisions to make. Um, but the people who have water in their basement and need to work on, on moving those up. Eventually, um, you know, the state has told us, uh, you know, temporary should be about six months. Our office is saying, there's no way that would ever happen. So we're already looking at what's probably going to be one to two years. And it may be like a one year with a renewable automatically to two years, because we've got to, we've got to still follow the NFIP rules. So we're, we're trying to walk a line between what NFIP is telling us we have to do and how we can kind of get there i- in the right amount of time. So we're trying to walk a line and that's what we're trying to do. But we want people to know eventually, things have to get moved up. If there are unique cases, and we know there are going to be unique cases. Um, we're going to have to have, we have a process and we're going to have to go through that process with individual homeowners. Um, people have already told us, hey, if you've got a, if you're a big commercial building, if you've got a steam boiler in your basement, you can't elevate that. It operates on gravity, there's no way to move that and we've got to work with you. Um, and we work with people different times, different ways. Uh, the sewer plant had a flood issue um, two years ago. We got a waiver for them because their pumps were going to be below flood stage, but they have to be below flood stage. So FEMA, we worked through the state and they approved it. They just, um, Kurt and the people at the water plant, they actually have extra, or the sewer plant, they actually have extra pumps onsite. So they're allowed to keep this stuff below flood plane, even though you normally wouldn't. So we work with people to come up with a solution. But if you can meet the rules, we can issue the permit, you come in, you apply, we issue the permit in twenty-four to forty-eight hours, you've got your permit, you're ready to go. If you need special considerations, we need more time to work with the state about whether that special consideration is okay under NFIP or not.
Couple of things, just to reply, um, NFIP, for people who don't know, is National Flood Insurance Program. And basically, um, so these are federal government agencies' rules that are coming down, they're not Montpelier ordinances, they're not state laws. Not even federal laws, they're an agency's rules, um, that they seem to be imposing. The message from the city right now that I'm seeing, Mike, still is, you have to change them, you have to move them up. It doesn't clearly tell people they have an option for a short-term fix. Uh, maybe I'm missing something, but what I've been reading is pretty strong. And that's really causing some tough reactions in the community. I think the reality of doing this work, um, we've already started investigating it, we had been in some cases before this flood. And what it's going to take to get the, the permits, I've been told right now for one building, we've got that if the electrician submits the permit, the state will maybe get to it within a month. Um, from then on, the electricians have to order the hardware, which is not readily available. So yeah, you were right, that the six-month timeline is absolute dreamland. Um, it, it just, it needs, it needs a lot of thought and a lot of work and I think we have to help people through this right now. Um, our approach, we're making people go in and get permits for everything they're doing to keep their buildings running. It's just, oh, it's punitive and I gotta tell you, I don't have time for it. I, I'm dealing with insurance adjusters and contractors and I still have to make a living too. Um, and, and to add city permits to that list just feels really bad to me. I don't think it's the right way to go.
Well, the permits, the city permits have no fees. I, I don't know if you were at the last council, I don't know if you were there at the last council meeting, uh, but the council has waived the fee. So there are no city fees other than a recording fee.
Yeah.
Um, that's the only fee that you'll pay um, for any of the other ones.
But we recognize it takes a lot of time, Tim.
It does.
Okay, I see a couple of other council members hands up that I want to get to Carrie and then Sal.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, so a- as we were sitting down to this meeting here in our dining room, our neighbors came and knocked on the door. And they said, we heard that everyone's going to be required in the entire city to move their furnace up out of their basement. Is that true? And I said, I haven't heard anything about that. So now I'm wondering, did I steer my neighbors astray? And I have not gotten the communication that Tim has gotten, so this is all new to me. And um, we need, we need some clarification and people have already made repairs. So it's not a matter of um, deciding whether you're going to make the long-term repair or the short-term repair. People have already made repairs and haven't had a chance to even do that assessment of do I want to do the short-term or the long-term? Because they haven't heard anything about what the requirements are. So we need, we need some clarification and it needs to go out to everybody absolutely immediately.
I know we've been, we've been working with, um, and unfortunately, the, the nature of this has been that there's been a lot of these public notices. Um, but I know Evelyn has been doing and putting out a number of notices on this. We were just talking today about getting another one back out um, on a more regular basis. So we can keep reminding people, because a lot of people have had their heads down, just working on stuff. And we got to keep getting the message out and that was a conversation we had with Evelyn today. So um, I get that. So there, there are distinctions. And I will say this for anyone here, and if you, if you have anyone and they have any questions. Emailing Audra Brown, abrown@montpelier-vt.org. Um, not everything, and this is why it makes it so hard to try to condense something and then it's complicated. So if anyone has questions, if you email Audra, she will get back to you in writing with the, with the response. And the best part of that is, is you have evidence of what was said and they, and we have evidence of what was said and it works well. If somebody is repairing something, there's a distinction between repair and replace. If you're repairing something, it does not need to be elevated. If it's replaced, it does. So a lot of what we've been telling people is, you know, if you're going to do a temporary repair, go ahead and do it. That's, that's not going to be uh, as, as big of an uh, uh, of, of an issue. But if you're going to, if somebody's come in to say that furnace has got to go and we've got to put a new furnace in. The new furnace has to be elevated to the next floor. Um, and uh, you know, the electrical panels, you know, there's only so many electricians, electrical panels have to get moved up. That's really, that's the number one safety issue. Um, the, the big issue about furnaces is, is losing it if we get a ice jam. Electric panels, people can die from electric panels underwater. So that's our big one. We want to make sure we get the electric panels up, we want to make sure we get those furnaces moved up. So that way, if we've got flooded in, in January because of an ice jam, um, there are three hundred and seventy-five buildings in the flood plain. Um, if, if it's a hundred-year flood event, which is about what we had, there's three hundred and seventy-five buildings. Um, and that's a lot of, a lot of stuff that has to get fixed and a lot of um, potential damage if this happens in the winter.
Thanks, uh, Sal, then Donna, and then I want to get back to members of the public.
Uh, I just wanted to, to say that I, I, I agree with both Mike and Tim. I think, like, for example, that distinction you just made, Mike, about repair versus replace is in the language, but it isn't really clear to people, I don't think. I think you need to call things like that out. I think a lot of people don't know where the rivered hazard area is, they need a map. And I think uh, they are unclear about what FEMA will and will not reimburse. Whether they'll reimburse a short-term fix and then also uh, like if you fix your electrical panel today to get, get it up and running and then you move it upstairs six months from now. Are they uh, paying for one and not the other? How, how does it work? So there are a lot of questions like that.
Yeah, and I, I won't be able to help with any of the FEMA stuff. Um, the, what they reimburse and what, um, because there, there are many avenues of getting FEMA assistance. Um, if you have insurance, then you're going to have to follow what the insurance rules are. If you've got um, the, the individual assistance, then that's going to be a different set of rules. And um, I, I just am not familiar enough with those rules. That is always, always something I'll direct people, talk to FEMA if you need FEMA advice. If you have permit advice, um, absolutely email our, our office. Um, it's, it's what we do, doesn't cost anything to ask us a question.
Well, just time, I just want to interject here too, we actually did put in a formal request uh, to have FEMA representatives at this meeting tonight. Uh, and they were not able to do so because there's a statewide meeting with the congressional delegation on Zoom and the governor. And so they are on that, but they, they did say perhaps at a future, some future forum, they could participate. But we, we knew we would not be able to answer FEMA questions and we wanted to have someone here. Um, so it wasn't for lack of trying.
Donna.
Well, I have sort of three points. One is, Bill, is there any staff available to help people with the FEMA process? It is overwhelming and very intimidating. And so I don't know if they're going to have people here or if we can have some staff to help people. Because they say, you know, they say register, but then you've got to do all this stuff online and it's, and I feel, I've heard from people being confused. So just ask if that's possible.
Um. The problem is that you don't understand it really a lot better than anybody.
Either.
So, so I, you know, we've been trying not to give people bad advice, um, and, and, you know, speak for FEMA. Because, you know, people will then say, well, you know, Bill Fraser or Mike Miller or Kelly Murphy told me this and that didn't work. Um, so we're trying to steer them to the right people. So having said that, you know, we did ask for FEMA representatives to be at the, the hub. And they have been this week and there's been a steady stream of people talking to them. I don't know how that's going. They are opening their disaster recovery center for at least thirty days at the rec center, which that's what it's for, is to provide. You know, an on-the-ground resource for people as opposed to just going online. You know, I think the first wave of people was going door-to-door, trying to assess what the damage was and have initial conversations. So again, I'm not trying to apologize or speak for FEMA, but I do know that they are bringing more resources into the community to try to work with people and that's.
I did get an email saying FEMA was going to be at the tent this week and I did remind people that have been in touch with me to go. Uh, it's good to hear that they're also going to be at the rec center for the next thirty days. Um, my other question was dealing with uh, DPW. My other question was dealing with DPW, I've gotten so many golden, I'll go to Mike's. Somewhere I read that you could do repairs and get your permit after the fact. You didn't mention that, is that still true for a repair, not a replacement?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're kind of getting out of the emergency phase at this point, so we're trying to encourage people at this point. During the emergency phase, we didn't want anybody saying, you know, be concerned about saying, oh, my gosh, maybe I shouldn't have the electrician fix my electricity, I'm just going to have to move into a hotel until I can get my permits. We want people to say no. If you need to get electricity back in your house, you get electricity back in your house, and we will deal with your permits later.
Okay.
And do, do your temporary fixes. But at the same time, we were trying to get this information out, and apparently not, not clear enough, or, and, and maybe a little too forceful about making sure people knew eventually these things got to go up, go get elevated. That's just one of the requirements, and. So we're going to, we're trying to do a better job with our communications going forward, we will.
Yeah, luckily, I understood that piece between repair and replacement, but it is, I mean, I think we're just overwhelmed. So thank you for keep making it clear, clarifications.
And it was tough, it was tough not having an office for, you know, we lost, for people who didn't know, we, we had forty-one inches in the planning office, and so we lost. I had a computer, and I think one other person had a computer, but we had no phones, no desks, no pens, papers, no phones, and two computers, and we didn't really get set up for about seven days. For most of the time, we would have been right out, right away to try to, to, to get the word out. But we were kind of playing a little bit from behind for a bit, and it, it didn't help when we rushed the messaging. It, it got a little, maybe got a little too, didn't, didn't take the, the time necessary to make sure we had vetted that, to make sure it had the right intent.
Well, so you can just keep putting it out and, and a little softer, that's good. Now, this may be DPW, there's a lovely chart that came with one of the DPW newsletters about separating your debris. And it talks about appliances and then electronics and then household hazard. So they have literally, like, when I was helping with some people with the boomer, they had to move their stuff from underneath the trees. Then we brought down the paints. But when I read this chart, it would say appliances are coming next. So that's another schedule of the boomer going around and just doing appliances. And then another time they'll go around and just do electronics and then hazardous, is that how it's going to flow?
Um, defer to DPW, I'm not sure they're going to be using the big, the big rigs for those things. I think there, you know, for example, we've done a lot of separation, and we're, have been collecting a lot of that next to City Hall. There's been a huge amount of paint cans, and saw Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District today, loading all the paint stuff and taking those away. So that was separate than the, the big company that's doing the debris removal. So I think there's several, but if, if DPW wants to actually say something that they know, that'd be even better.
My understanding is that the appliances will be picked up separately. I think like Bill said, the, the smaller items likely won't be, you know, done by the large truck. There, there's going to be kind of a cleanup sweep. There's areas where there's very small amount of trash, sort of like out on the outskirts of town, along the North Branch. There's a property out near Gould Hills that had some minor flooding. So I think for the smaller items, it will be a different type of pickup. But I do believe they will be doing a separate run for the, they call it white goods, which is the appliances.
You know, we have these small streets, I think of the one that goes by Montpelier Inn. They took a lot of their wood and debris, and they put it out by the side of that little street that's off of Main Street, that's sort of their driveway, but actually I think has a street name, or did. Wasn't it Brown Street at one point?
It's actually a private street, Brown Street, it's private.
Okay, well, now their stuff is there.
Brown Street is, is not private, Baird Street is a private street, that's the one you're talking about.
Okay, Bear Street, thank you. So I don't know, I mean, if the boomer's going to go there, are they going to hit some of those little side streets? I'm just a little worried they'll get missed.
Yeah, no, so in the areas that are too tight for the, the boom truck, DPW is actually moving the debris out closer to the right away on the bigger street where we, where they can access it. So we will get it, it's just, it might take a second move.
Okay, just, I just, I got, they asked me, and so I just wanted to check, thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kurt, thanks, Donna. I'd like to look back to members of the public who have their hands up, and I see Connor Kennedy first.
Thanks, Jack, sorry, I'm having internet issues, so I can't have my camera. I was wearing my hat coming into this as a resident, but wearing my other day job hat, working in the legislature. I think everyone on the call should know that we know there's a lack of resources for communities across Vermont, and we are working to make sure that there are individuals that can support, come in and support towns, municipalities and cities to navigate a lot of these tricky challenges. The one I showed up tonight for is, I'm just curious about the housing thing. I know Sharon brought it up earlier. And wondering why the State College or the VHF A has taken so long. I think many of us might have seen the article yesterday that there are three hundred to four hundred displaced people out of Berry, and then within our own city, we're going to see people that were fine on second or third floors. But there needs to be work done, and so they need a place to go for, you know, a week, two weeks or a month. And if we've had any thoughts and what else we as a community can do to like sort of bang that door to make sure that this dorm that has a hundred and fifty beds can be available for folks.
Bill, do we have? I refer that question to Vermont College and let them respond to that. There, there is space there. I think I understand there's been some conversations, and I'm not sure what their position is at the moment. But I think it's a very good point, Connor. Stan Brinkerhoff.
Thanks, Jack, Stan Brinkerhoff, Main Street. Mike, I, I spoke with your office early on when some of that news, you know, first came out around lifting utilities. And also, you've spent two weeks in homes, cleaning basements, ripping out walls, and, and spoke with a number of HVAC folk and electrical, electricians who really had no knowledge, they even needed permits in some cases. They, they considered their work to be, you know, repair work, even if a panel was being replaced. And I, I have seen the press release, you know, thank you for, for putting that out, I saw it in the bridge, I saw it in, in some emails. And I, I think I read it differently than maybe Tim did, but also Tim was on some of my early emails when there was a, a bunch of confusion. It, it does seem like now is the time. We, we have a list of addresses that were impacted, you know, Montpelier Live has the ones that asked for help. We know the ones that have trash out front. I don't know to what extent the city can make, you know, a, a recovery guide for folks that, that's short and visual and, and isn't scary. But, but folks do need to know that they, they need to move those things up. And if you're moving an electrical panel up, now, now is the time, when your walls are open, when your floors are open, right, a lot of these homes have their floors removed. It is significantly cheaper to move an electrical panel now or replace a furnace with something that, that fits better now than, than to replace it now, not knowing you need to then replace it in the future. So I would implore the city to more actively, not just publish press releases and, and put things on front-page form, but, but either use volunteers or individually just go door-to-door to the impacted houses and, and help people navigate an expensive time of their lives, thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Do you have a response to that, Mike, or just take that for what it's worth?
Yeah, no, the recovery guide's a good idea, and it's understandable, the, the, in general, the, the plumbing, which is the HVAC and furnace and electricians, we don't do those permits. But because we've got the flood hazard rules, they come in, so generally, they don't need to be doing that. So it is, from, from their standpoint, they're not, they're not wrong. Usually it doesn't come into, uh, come into effect on them. This is one of the few times that it does come into effect on them. And the state electrician and the, the state plumbers are trying to get the word out from, from above to let people know that these are actually the, the requirements as they apply through FEMA and NFIP. So, yeah, and the recovery guide isn't, is an excellent idea. We're, as I said, we have a meeting tomorrow, and I'm going to bring that up as, as one of the options for us to, to consider.
Thanks, Mike.
If I can help at all, let me know.
Kristy Benzema. Oh, I thought we had you there for a moment.
Sorry, sorry, in and out really fast. Hi, I'm Kristy Benzema, I live over on Franklin Street. My question circles back to this conversation about moving furnaces and utilities up into the main floor of your house. And one question, one part of that question is about what financial resources will be available to help people do that. And the other part of the question is just the logistical practicalities, like is everyone's house going to accommodate something like that? And how do we imagine that happening? So thank you for taking my question.
Yeah, it's a good question, it's, it's going to be a challenge, and it's going to be a case, a case-by-case as we help individuals. As we've had some conversations with people so far, we've talked about potentially putting a small addition on the back of a house. And really, let me back up a half step to say, the requirement is, it has to be two feet above the base flood elevation. So in certain places, that's going to, that's going to differ as to, you know, in some cases, elevating it a little bit in the basement may get you high enough. But for the most part, if you've got flooding in the basement that flooded your furnace, chances are good the base flood elevation is higher than that, so that's why we say the first floor. A lot of older furnaces are very big, many of the modern ones are, are, are smaller, they're much more compact. So, you know, trying to fit them into, you know, taking away a half a closet. You know, we talked to some large commercial, you know, if you have a big building and you've got twelve apartments in it, then, you know, that may mean going from a three-bedroom to a two-bedroom for one of the units on the first floor and taking a bedroom or losing an apartment. And we don't really want to be doing that, but as we look at the other equation of we want to be more resilient, how can we be more resilient? And one of the things is, all of the buildings that have been built over the past fifteen years, twenty years, thirty years, that have been built to flood standards, none of them suffered any damage in this flood. So if you want to know how can we be more resilient, the answer is meeting flood codes. But it's expensive, and that gets to your second point, how do we help people do that? And obviously, if we knew this flood was coming in July, we would have been preparing last year to make sure we had grants ready for people. But we, we've got to kind of work on the fly now to say, all right, here are the rules, and if everybody does this, and everybody's supposed to do this, we're going to be a much more resilient community coming out of this than we did coming into it. We will be much more resilient. But we've got to try to find, and that's, goes to the question that was earlier, what about, you know, these FMA? I mean, if there's something on emergencies, emergency management, there's certainly alphabet soup, so of grants and opportunities, and we are currently just breeding six-hundred-page things just to understand, is this, is this eligible? Will this help us? How can we, how can we use this tool to bring some additional resources? But it's going to take time, even if we find a great grant, we might not get the money to the city until next year. So that's why we're trying to see, maybe some of these things are reimbursable after the fact, somebody made that point, I don't know. It may be reimbursable under this grant, not under this grant, so maybe we have to consider that's a better grant. And we'll, we will look at that, we know, and we're trying to get if, and here's another request out to the public. If you've got bit, uh, uh, numbers and estimates, if you can get them to my office, we would love to have them. Because as we communicate to people, they're like, what's it going to cost to raise an electrical panel in a house? I don't know, but if, as people get us information, we can then turn around and give that information back to say, well, we've seen a range from this to this, depending on what your house is, how big your house is, how much, you know, obviously, a, a eight-unit building is going to have a bigger electrical panel than a single-family home. We, we want, we would love to have information, if you have information, get it to us. But we, we were going to get to that down the line, we want to make sure we use this first time right now to get people. As Tim had pointed out, we got to do a better job getting information on the permits out. But eventually, we want to get, we want to get these cost estimates, because it helps us get information back to you. And it helps us know how much money do we need to apply for at the federal government? Because we need to be able to tell the federal, federal government, every electrical panel is going to cost X thousand dollars. And we have this many panels that need to be moved, and this is how much money we need to, to make our community more resilient. And so I hope that kind of gets around to answering the question there.
Thanks, Mike. While you were, while I was hearing a bunch of answers, I, I got a text from a legislature saying, what is taking so long to up, open State Street in front of the Capitol? So I promised that I would ask. Well, some of it is they've asked us, the state has asked us to keep it closed while they do repair. So they may want to ask BGS that question and not us. But part of, you know, because they have those big, heavy equipment and major things down there, so they've asked us if we would keep it closed. Oh, that's good to know, thanks. Let's see, going to people who have not spoken yet, Barbarina.
Hi there, I have a few quick related questions, just has the city done a canvas or a survey of how many people lost their housing during the flood? Do we have any numbers? I've talked to Rick DeAngelis, and I've talked to Connor Casey, and I've heard some pretty high numbers, but I wonder if the city had gone door-to-door to find out how many families are currently, have lost their house.
All right, does anyone have an answer to that? Door-to-door, we've, we've operated off of information that's been turned over to us from those individuals or building owners that reported displaced housing.
And do we have a total?
You could say also that we're working on compiling that. Yeah, that is something we are on, I, yeah, I, I would want to give a number because I think it is incomplete. So I, we're, we're aware of one major apartment building that everybody was displaced in. And a couple of people that were hit, some people that were moved, but we don't have a total number.
According to Rick DeAngelis, there are dozens of families who are trying to navigate camping, and there are increasing conflicts with landowners, and so.
So there's a different issue there. So there are people that have been displaced as a result of the state's hotel programs.
No, this is because of the flood. People have been displaced because of the. Montpelier residents.
All right, well, I'm going to be seeing Rick tomorrow, so I will ask, follow up with him, because that is not information we have.
But a question that I had, given that the city owns the Elks Club property, and because Rick said there's increasing conflict between people who are camping and property owners, whether the city could open up that for sanctioned camping and maybe ask the National Guard to build twenty outhouses so that people had sanitation, and whether people could access potable water from the Elks Club building. It just feels like it's, it's a pretty challenging summer to be camping. I've done a lot of camping, and this is not the summer I would choose to camp in, especially not having access to reliable, potable water, sanitation. And my understanding is that elected officials, even municipal ones, under these kind of natural disasters have emergency powers where they can ask for things from the National Guard, you need to pay for them. But like, getting a bunch of outhouses built, requesting camp stoves, and giving people access to potable water just feels like, in this kind of a humanitarian crisis, that might be a strategic and a compassionate thing to do.
So, it's a great idea, like I said, I'm meeting with Rick about shelter, emergency shelter, it's either tomorrow or Friday, and we'll get on that. get on that, you know, we, the city does have a camping policy uh, that we follow and we are aware of some people that are already camping up there. So, uh, those are good suggestions. We'll follow up on it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barbarina. Um, I want to look over the list to see if there's anyone who hasn't spoken yet, uh, before I go back to people who have. And I'm not seeing anyone, so I'll go back to Connor.
Hi, thanks, Jack. I'm sorry. I, I cut out a little bit, so maybe you've covered this, but I just think, um, it's one of those times where we have to be creative and nimble, find all solutions. Um, and what Barbarina just said and what others have said, like, we have people that need to find housing temporarily and the fact that we have a space at the top of the hill that is available and is usable, I think we should use every ounce of our energy to try to make that happen. And I, I gotta be, I gotta say, like, it, it's stunning to me that we haven't made that happen yet. So if we need legislative action, state action, like we have people that need housing and we got to make that happen. It, it's, it's just invaluable to me that we're going to send people to the Berry Auditorium when they just need temporary housing. But again, thank you for all you do. You guys are working overtime, but we have a solution and it's right next door.
Thanks, Connor. Um, Casey Whitley.
Thanks. Um, I just, I just want to second what Barbarina and, and Connor have just said that, you know, between the dorm space up at, up at the college and, and this new property that we have. I, I mean, great, we have a camping policy, but this is a catastrophe and we need to, we need to respond to it. Um, and then I just wanted to, so I wanted to support that, that point of view uh, strongly. I just want to go back to what, um, Mike was saying about everybody moving their utilities upstairs. You know, I, I, I lost, I live in an 1880s house on St. Paul Street and I lost my hot water. Uh, I lost my furnace and honestly, I wanted some hot water. I didn't want to wait for, uh, anything to be moved upstairs and I didn't even know about that until tonight's meeting. So I've already installed a hot water heater that I didn't, that's not as nearly as good as the one I lost. And, um, so I, and I'm on a, I'm on a fixed income. So when you're talking about these major huge like home cha- cha- home improvements and changes and like the cost of wiring to move elec- electrical boxes and things like that. It's like, I don't know. I, 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 there's no way I could afford to do any of that. And I honestly have to say that. So I just want to put that into the hopper. Thanks.
Thanks. Um, all right, on our agenda, I'm, I want to give people plenty of time to, uh, to come in with any, uh, comments or questions they may have that have not been addressed. Uh, part of what we have on our agenda for tonight is the frequently asked questions page. I don't think we need to go over, uh, what's in that document, but I think we do want to make sure that everybody uh, watching and everyone in the city knows that we have a page on the city this webpage that addresses a whole bunch of questions. Um, some which have probably come up tonight and others which have not, but have been asked by a lot of people. And, uh, and that's a living document that things, things get added to it as we find out there are more questions being, uh, being asked. Tim.
Okay. Well, just one quick question that's occurred to me listening is, so the, the whole cleanup operation is happening and thanks to those guys who are out working in this heat, doing that, it's awful work. Uh, and they're doing an incredible job, but how long will this go on? I guess is my question. And, uh, it, it seems like people are starting to abuse it. We're starting to see trash coming in from outside the flood area where people are just dumping off. Sadly, so I think we, we're going to have to define a limit, say we picked up once in front of your property or that's it. But I think we have to start telling people when it's going to end because they're going to keep putting things out just thinking it's going to magically disappear.
Well, yes, I can, I can address that, Tim. Um, well, generally there's a, a three pass policy for these FEMA eligibility on removal. And, um, we've just, we're kind of still in first pass and we do plan to message, um, that, that, you know, there is going to be a cutoff date. We're looking at, um, maybe two weeks, uh, remaining of tra- of debris removal. Um, so, uh, yeah, we do plan to message that and, and there is going to be a definitive sort of cutoff date um, associated with that. And to Donna's point, like the white goods, I, you know, I expect they will also be taking second pass of, um, construction debris removal at the same time. You know, there's two bays in those trucks, so one will be white goods, the appliances and the other will be debris likely. Um, but we do plan to message that soon and we'll get that out.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I wanted to go back to the housing question that a couple of people raised and, uh, I'm going to probably give unpopular responses to this, but I think it's fair. Um, the Berry Opera, uh, Berry Office, Berry Auditorium is the Red Cross and FEMA funded shelter for our region. They have COTS, they have medical, they have food, they have mental health services, they're able to take pets. Um, there, people do not need to camp. They can go to the Berry Auditorium and get those basic supplies. I understand it's not monteiliar, but there is a whole support network around that. And that is what has, is designated as, so these are Red Cross centers are set up on regional basins. And so the Berry Odd is the regional, uh, center for these kinds of things. So it's the whole Washington County area. And FEMA and everyone else is, that's what they're going to pay for. They're not going to pay for additional sites. Secondly, um, I don't really, I've been reluctant to speak for Vermont College, but we have talked to them about this. And it's not that they're not willing to have it. But understandably they'd like to get paid because they, uh, usually get paid for rooms and they want to know how we are going, we or whoever does it is going to provide basic services, including cleaning, including managing the population that's in there, including providing support services to them. And they have said that if somebody can provide, can present all of that to them, they will consider it. At the same time, they're selling their property to somebody else. So they're very concerned about the condition that it be sold as. So it's in a, it's in a strange situation. So they're not refusing to do it, but they are asking for uh, understanding how, how things are going to work. Their entire facilities people are in Colorado right now. They're not there to manage their own facilities. So there, i- it's not as simple as simply saying, we are going to take their private property and put 150 people in it. And I can understand that people don't like that. And it is frustrating, but there are others, there are other things along with it. So I get it. And we can certainly take a look at what we can do at our own site. But we are told over and over and over again by people, you know, depending on the nature of the shelters that's being provided, that you need to have more support services than just a, a campground for people. So, um, and, and as I've, we've talked, the city staff, uh, is really full out on sort of flood recovery right now and don't have anywhere with all work or money to do this. So that is why things are the way they are. Um, and again, there is, uh, the last I knew, and I haven't checked this week, there was still ample capacity at Berry Odd to take more people. So, uh, there, there is a safe place for people to go. Uh, Barbarina, very briefly, please.
I, I don't know what the capacity is, but I talked to Rick two days ago and there were 200 households in the Berry Auditorium two days ago. And that's a whole lot. So just.
I guess you have more recent information than I have, so I will check on that for sure.
Right. And I understand the complexities with the college. The other thing that occurred to me is we have a bunch of school buildings. I mean, it's not designated shelters, but the city owns them. They've got sanitation, they've got potable water, they've got places for people to plug in their phones. I'm just feeling for people who lost everything on the 10th and the 11th. And is there anything the city can do? I mean, I'm so grateful for the incredible volunteerism to help our businesses, but I'm hearing about families who are just in desperate, desperate situations. And if we do have properties, I guess, just wondering, is there a way that we can as a city help? And just a friend of mine interfaces with FEMA a lot and just after Katrina, FEMA paid for people to stay on cruise ships. I mean, just they have paid a lot of money and if the Berry Auditorium is a capacity, is there a way we can think outside the box to get people at least potable water, at least sanitation, at least a place to charge phones?
And we have heard that, we have heard that FEMA under, you know, depending on, again, this is where an individual has to talk to FEMA, but they may put them in hotel rooms too, that there is that there are programs. Again, we don't control what FEMA does, but we are trying to work with them to do what we can. I just, I really want to just address the issue that there was sort of a suggestion that there was some lack of effort or a lack of willingness on Vermont College's part to just take people. And I wanted to be clear that there's more complexity to that and that the, the funding mechanism is really built around the Berry Odd and this whole support network. So that was my main point. But if, if they're up to 200 households, then maybe they are at capacity. That is, that is news to me.
Bill, I can tell you that I just got a text from, uh, someone saying that he had heard that the Berry Auditorium is going to be closing within days. So I think that's something that we really need to be looking into. I know you're going to be talking to Rick tomorrow, so, um, that's just part of, part of your conversation, I'm sure.
Okay. Just the updated info I just got from the police chief was that there were 22 people in the auditorium last night. So I think we need to ground truth and facts, um, as well.
And, uh, this is, this is, uh, Bob Gowan's. I just talked with one of the directors up there. They are still open and they have plenty of room at the Berry Auditorium tonight. Thanks, Chief. Um, folks, I, there is a lot that we're going to be, uh, dealing with over the coming months and, uh, and so I, uh, I don't want to prematurely cut off this discussion, but I also know that this is far from the last conversation we're going to have on this topic. So unless there's something else, I'll, I'll move along. And Lauren, I see your hand up.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Um, one, just appreciate, I mean, I know the city has spent, you know, we've all spent a lot of time on homelessness and so just encourage the the staff and obviously I'm happy to help myself too, um, in any way of just thinking creatively and trying to pursue and, you know, even having things lined up in case the Berry Auditorium closes and we still have needs and so on. So, um, and you know, there might be a wave, given what we're hearing of some other reports of like households and Berry and stuff. So, um, just, just urge us to really um, pursue that as I'm hearing that city staff is saying that they will, um, and happy to help. Um, also just wanted to note, um, I hope part of the conversation I, and I don't know what the city staff are putting out from, um, about like heating systems and stuff. There are options like heat pumps that do not mean you have to change the layout of your, um, you know, upstairs or build an addition on your house. Um, so I, I just hope that there's information, there's incentives, there's zero upfront cost financing options. There's like a huge amount of effort the state is putting into helping people transition to cleaner technologies. You know, you've torn out your house, maybe it's a great time to weatherize and there's, there's like, if you're low income, you can get free weatherization services. There might be a long wait time for that, but anyway, there's, there are a lot of programs, there's a lot of state incentives. So I just hope that somehow we're connecting those dots for people too. Um, so we're not like locking in a bunch of new fossil fuel systems at a time that we're trying to get off of them as we're dealing with a climate fueled emergency. Um, and lastly, just it was great to hear the interest in the community process on resilience. So I will follow up, um, about that. Um, and just wanted to, um, thank one of the people who was helping me think that through, um, some ideas with, was Paul Costello, who's an amazing community resource. I just wanted to thank him for, um, helping me, uh, think through some ideas and I'm going to be following up with him and many others. So look out for that. Thanks.
Yep. Well, Paul was on the meeting earlier, uh, and is no longer here. I know there, there are a lot of people at, at the meeting, but, uh, that's, that's what we have now. Um, I think we, from now, we can go right to council reports, um, starting at Donna's end of the horseshoe.
Okay. Well, I'm going to start with some good news from Vermont College of Fine Arts. They responded 100% willing to let the Lost Nation Theater move their rehearsal to their building, Noble Hall. They gave them plenty of rehearsal space plus the kitchen dining room. They were just so gracious to let them move in when the theater no longer had access to the city hall. And likewise Berry Opera House, uh, it did cost them a little bit, but they made a deal with the theater to allow them to perform two shows of Addams Family this past weekend. And again, it was community working together. And I s- I think, uh, when the situation is right, people want to help when they can. But we can't all blindly help or we'd all have people in our own homes. Uh, so there's limitations. So I just hope we consider those and recognize the good deeds we do, even when we can't do everything. And just thanks to everybody for being here. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Uh, Carrie.
Uh, just want to say thanks to, um, the debris removal folks for coming down St. Paul Street today and cleaning up St. Paul Street. We were, we were prepared to wait a long time and it's very nice to have the trash cleared away.
Agreed. So.
Um, well, I, I just, um, I guess I, I just want to say that I appreciate the, uh, what, what I heard today from the city about their appreciation for the sort of pickle that people are in, particularly financially with the kinds of replacements and repairs that they may need to make. Um, I hope we pursue that vigorously. I wonder if we can do more along the lines of the things Lauren was talking about to help people realize that it's an ideal time to weatherize and, and maybe replace um, fossil fuel technology. I mean, the, the, the cost unfortunately, I think is an obstacle for a lot of people. I don't know for what we can do in the short term, but added to our list of grant research to do might be, um, some energy related stuff since we still have a few months uh, before people are going to need that, I, I hope. Um, so thanks for all of that.
Thanks, Sal. Tim.
Echo the tone of comments with thank you. It's, it's been an amazing experience for us. I mean, people, we don't even know coming into our house and carrying muck out of the basement and sheet rock tails. Um, just the outreach of people helping people in this town is, is astounding and gratifying and, um, yeah, having one crew member who's on one of our buildings, sitting on the steps, taking a break one day, we'd just come from a another disaster in Florida and said, you know, this town is really amazing. So I've, I've been other places. I've never seen a place where people come together like this and, and do this. So that was kind of neat to hear from a young guy. Um, I'm also, you know, it was my role in the Montpelier Foundation. I have to say people are also donating their treasure and their, they're, they really are donating to help each other. The financial donations that are coming in to help the citizens and businesses in Montpelier really going to help and it's going to make its, help us to bring it back. So thank you all. And, and also thank you to the city team, um, you know, watching you and kind of working in similar circles, running around downtown the last two weeks. Everyone I've seen at every level has just been incredible, um, making things happen and, and helping us get back. So. Cheers.
Thanks, Tim. Uh, Lauren.
Yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, just, just echo that really inspiring. All the, all the volunteers. Monteiliar Life has been an amazing partner stepping up, um, and just so much gratitude to go around. Um, but I know that, um, the one kind of committee update, the energy committee, uh, did talk about, uh, potentially serving as a resource. We recently set up an outreach committee. Um, so we might be able to be someone who could help, uh, pull together resources on what's available for, um, you know, clean energy and efficiency, um, incentives and things like that, that people might be able to access. So just, just sharing that there's some interest in that and we're trying to meet soon to explore how we could potentially be a resource for community members right now as they make decisions about re, um, rebuilding. Thanks.
Thanks, Lauren. Mayor's report is, is quite, quite a bit the same of tremendous gratitude for the, uh, for all the work. I've been, uh, meeting down at the hub with the Meeting down at the hub with the, with the manager and department heads and, uh. People coordinating the volunteers to talk about, well, what, what are our needs for today? What are we going to do? What are we going to ask FEMA and the National Guard? And all these guys to do and, uh. Seeing the people coming in volunteering, showing up to pick up shovels and gloves and. Shovel out people's, uh, commercial properties and, and homes has been great. People coming down. Unasked to just come down and say, well, I'm just going to. Stand out here for as long as it takes and cook meals for people so that the volunteers who are, uh, who are coming down, uh. Don't have to deal with trying to find, find lunch while they're doing it. It's just a tremendous outpouring of support. Um. People love this community and see why. And we've got plenty of work ahead of us, but I, I really appreciate everything that, uh, people have done. City Clerk's report.
I don't have anything.
Okay, city manager's report. It's been, it's kind of all you all the time tonight, Bill. Uh, but maybe you have more.
I do have more actually, uh, just a little bit more, um, on Berry Odd, just to close that loop. Uh, we did, um, thanks to our. Folks, our public safety staff who reached out while this meeting was going on. So we confirmed twenty-two people in the odd last night. Um, and that they are not families, but only individuals. There were twenty-two individuals, were not families. And they are looking to wind that down because it's, uh, there are not that as many people there. Um, but they, they haven't made a final decision about that yet. Um, just to prove that we're not, that I am not all cold black heart, um, recognizing that homelessness and shelter is. A big, uh, thing. Uh, I'm meeting with Rick DeAngelis and the, the team on Friday about winter shelter that is still very much, uh, on our minds. So I will certainly get his take on what the, the situation is in Washington County, um, currently. Uh, they were almost ready to go, uh, with a, a year or winter or year round shelter at Bethany Church. And of course they're, they're completely flooded out now. Um, and I, I don't know what kind, I haven't been in the basement of that building yet to see what kind of shape it's in. Uh, so that is out. So they are talking to us and one, one option is the Country Club Road Elks Club site. Um, so we are going to be discussing that possibility. It's not. The best location, but, um, given the need and given the circumstances, I think we need to be open to that and, uh, see what we can work out with them. So we're beginning that conversation. Uh, at least for this winter, uh, this week. So that is happening and shelter is still on our minds, even while flood is happening. Um, to Lauren's question about, uh. Energy, we are advising people to look at energy and, um, specifically downtown businesses, um, we've been reminding them the district heat would remind, would. Uh, be a way for them to get furnaces out of their basements. Uh, we have at least one interest, very interested, um, building owner. And, uh, potentially others. So, uh, this is, you know, the, while they're ripping their buildings out, I mean. And, and there's a lot of costs, uh, while there's cost of hooking up, this is a good time for people to consider doing that. So. If you're talking to commercial building owners and, you know, Tim, I know you do, uh, this is, you know, this is a good time. And as we all know, the more people we can get on. Uh, the lower the cost is for everybody. So it becomes, uh, you know, a kind of a self. Propelling success. So we're trying to, to look at that, uh, to, to bring that to people's attentions. Lastly, uh, not the most popular topic, but, um, the, the grievance process for reappraisals has been moved. Uh, it is now happening between July thirty-one and eight, August four at the senior center. So those hearings were all postponed and will be held. Uh, at those dates. So, uh. Basically first week in August. That's all I have for now.
Thanks, Bill. Great work, uh, all the, of these last couple of weeks. Uh, I really mean that. I'll follow up Donna. Uh, what, before the meeting, I mentioned to Donna that my granddaughter just went to see the, uh. Addams Family play the other day and she told us it was the best play she had ever seen. So, uh. She was very enthusiastic. And with that, we can adjourn at eight forty-six PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.